Ms. Johnson, if you'll call the row, please.
President.
Commissioner Butler.
President.
Commissioner Dawson.
President.
Commissioner Lucas.
President.
Mayor Rainey.
Present.
We have a quorum, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. We are now called to order. Commissioner Lucas, would you do our prayer and pledge, please?
Please stand. Dear Lord, we just thank you for this evening. We ask that you be with us tonight as we make decisions for this city. Bless our city, bless our leaders. Be with us in the night. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to amend the agenda to remove item 8A.
Second.
Would that be a second, Mr. Butler?
Ma'am.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Ms. Johnson, will you call the row, please? Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye.
Public hearings, there are none tonight. Citizen comments, Ms. Johnson? Yes, ma'am. Ms. Anna Maria Willingham? If you'll tell us your name and your address.
Hi, yes, ma'am. Good evening, everyone. My name is Anna Maria Willingham. It's very nice to meet you all. I finally get to put faces with names. My address is 7144 Kyle's Creek Drive, Fairview. And I'm here tonight because I would like to know if there's any way to overturn a decision that was made in July with regards to the installation of several stop signs in my neighborhood, particularly one in my front yard that I'm not too crazy about. The reasons that I don't want that stop sign in my yard are mainly because, one, I think it's not necessary. With my stop sign in my yard, across the street, there's two more, so there's three stop signs in a very small intersection. And if the purpose of the stop signs is to reduce speed or safety, I'm all about that, but I think the neighborhood is more suited for speed bumps and not stop signs. I wish I would have known about the meeting in July. I didn't. I found out when I saw the post in my yard. So that's really why I'm here today. There's other reasons, but that's the main one. I just don't see the necessity of a third stop sign in such a small intersection and in such a small neighborhood. If you want safety, if you want people to slow down, I get that. I think it's a neighborhood that's too small to have all of these stop signs there. What was in place originally was sufficient. Put a speed bump right when you turn left onto Kyle's Creek Drive. Put a speed bump there. Put another one in front of my house. Put two more down towards the end of the road where it dead-ends. You know, there's other places in this city that need stop signs more severely. For example, when you leave Kyle's Creek and make a right onto Chester, people are always flying down to the bottom of the hill when you get to Pen Grove. That would be a great spot for a stop sign. That type of street, Chester, which is way longer than Kyle's Creek Drive, is the type of street that does warrant stop signs and not speed bumps. So, for whatever it's worth, that's why I'm here. I also wanted to meet you, city manager, since we were communicating back and forth. And I hope that there's some way to overturn the decision that was made. I don't know what the process is. I don't know what the protocol is. You know, I'm not from here. I'm fairly new. So, if you need to school me, please do. I have no problem with you telling me what to do.
Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, is there anyone else? Yes, ma'am. Mr. Mike Flynn. Mr. Flynn, you have three minutes. If you'll tell us your name and your address.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for the time. My name is Mike Flynn. My address is 7186 Winfrey Drive. And I have somewhat of a, more of an inquiry, and I was glad to hear the discussion here about the annexation and how it works. But perusing through the Fairview zoning maps online, I live in the Otter Creek subdivision, which is the phase one part. And when I moved in, you know, I reviewed the plat lot maps, you know, for the entire subdivision, which I think it's somewhere around 160, give or take, houses that were proposed in there. Right now, there's about 30, 32 or so. And one thing that stood out, it's zoned in R20, one or two-family housing. And I'm curious, I mean, I was under the impression when I purchased the property that it was all single-family homes that were going to be. I don't know if something's changed since that, if there was an annex or if there was a request to change the zoning there since that time. So, I'd like to inquire about that. And then, also, in the zoning map, the Fairview city limits splits right in half, not even quite in half. It's one house behind my house where the end of the city limits line is. And I'm wondering if the entire subdivision was annexed into Fairview. So, that's my inquiry to the council. Thank you.
I can answer the first question, Mayor. And the entire subdivision was annexed into the city. My guess is the question that relates to that line is not the city limits as it relates to the subdivision, but phases within the subdivision, because there would be delineations between phases with the entire site when it was all one parcel was annexed into the city of Fairview. So, the entire subdivision is in the city. I apologize, I don't understand the first question. Is there...
It's listed in the coding as zone for R20.
Yes, sir.
Which says one or two-family housing. So, I assume that's duplex.
Yes, sir.
Well, is that subdivision going to have duplexes in it?
I've not been, no one has shared to me that there would be any duplex installed in there. The zoning does allow for duplex, but the only thing we've seen for construction plans, the site map, is all single-family homes in that subdivision.
And that hasn't changed? Because that's what I saw, that it was all...
As of this meeting, sir, I've not seen anything to indicate any duplex home or structure inside that subdivision.
Well, could that change, just arbitrarily by the developer, if he decides to do it?
The zoning does allow that, sir.
Your HOA covenants probably speak to duplexes. I would read your HOA covenants. That wouldn't be city-related. That would just be neighborhood-related.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Johnson, is there anyone else?
Denied.
I'll fill out the form after a good length. My name's David Dodaro. I live at 7551 Cherokee Hills Road.
And you have three minutes. Just a reminder.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Good evening, Board. I'd like to clear the air about my Christmas parade post on social media and address the commissioner's accusation that it was malicious. It was not. I had spoken with two different Chamber of Commerce members and found out that a parade permit was denied for December 11th because of "Shop with a Cop." That one's pretty obvious. As of Monday, November 1st, we may have a reverse parade December 18th with the locations still yet to be determined. Obviously, a nighttime parade would not work because that would interfere with the city's light show at Bowie Nature Park. That would not allow patrons to get in and out for a few hours. It would take a real nighttime parade. So, again, my post, the powers that be, it's either the city or T-Dot, because I know the BOC was not in the planning committee for any type parade. So, I said the powers to be. It wasn't trying to point fingers and call anybody names. But here's the odd thing I found. I find it really unprofessional that a commissioner would go to social media and make an accusation that it was malicious. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Thank you. Public announcements, awards, and recognitions, a city events. Mr. Ross, I bet that's you.
Yes, ma'am. I'm just going to remind everyone that the Holiday Wonders at Bowie Park will begin November the 26th. I believe that is Friday, the Friday after Thanksgiving, and it will last until January 9th. You can purchase tickets on the website that's listed above at elsnashville.com. Keith, can you go to the next slide, please? That's the general route that the drive-through light show is going to take. You can see there's multiple light tunnels. Going to be, you can drive through the snow laser tunnel. There's a bunch of different options that are there for everyone to drive through. Keith, can you go to the next slide, please? The city of Fairview and the Chamber has partnered to help bring the tree lighting ceremony event. That will be on Saturday, December 4th. It's going to be from 2:00 p.m. until 6:00 p.m. We're going to have several vendors, food trucks, petting zoo. The high school band is going to be performing. And we're also going to be having the tinsel tree lighting as well. The Chamber has taken that over, and it's going to be really spectacular about the tinsel tree trail. It's going to be sponsored by multiple businesses throughout the community, nonprofits. And the Chamber will provide the tree, the tree stand, fencing around the tree, and the tree will be decorated by its sponsor or a designated group. If anyone would like to donate or be a part of the tinsel trail, you can contact the Chamber of Commerce at fairviewareachamber@gmail.com or tap with the basket at 256-431-6561. And if anyone would like to be a vendor at the event, they can come by City Hall or contact us. That's all I have.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ross, is that here?
Yes, sir. That's going to be right here at City Hall.
Thank you, sir.
And I think that since I got an email from you today, this will be a good time for me to say that pork in the park has been postponed.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any questions? Eight, B, since we have removed A. Mr. Collins?
Yes, Mayor. I'm going to, I'll handle eight, B, C, and D, kind of in order here for you. As relates to the finance report, we got our final communication with our auditor today. As you know, our fiscal year started on July 1. We're required by State Code to present the audit to the BOC for acceptance no later than December 31 of this year. They are finalizing a couple of bullet points to some information that we needed to get to them for the completion of the audit. We expect the audit to be delivered to the BOC at the December 2 BOC meeting. That's for the fiscal year, the end of July 30. By all indications, we have another exceptional year. Preliminary number that we got back from the auditor and from the Bond Rating Agency or the Bond Council that we hired is that our unofficial numbers that our general fund cash position increased between July 1, 2020, and June 30, 2021, we had a $1.2 million increase in our cash position, which obviously helped us with our reserves, helps us with our bond rating, and will help us with the capital improvement projects that we're looking with to go forward and an employee compensation plan. So, all numbers on the financials have been a little better than what we thought, which is always good news. We look forward to getting that formal audit to you. One thing I would caution you on as we get into the audit is the city works off of a cash position. By State Code, all municipalities work off a cash position. And the audit works off of an accrual basis or modified accrual basis. So, the cash positions on the audit versus cash positions in the bank are always slightly off. Our cash position for actual cash is a little more than what's reflected in the audit. So, we're to the good in that direction. So, look forward to getting that information to you and using those dollars good use within the community as you've already decided to do. As relates to public works, not much to report on the public works department, except for we have transitioned from the chipper service to the leaf service. You may recall that three years ago, we transitioned from a vacuum system to a leaf collection system with biodegradable bags that are provided by the city of Fairview. So, as we get into that, we work through the same collection schedule, through the same routes for the leaf collection service. If there's anyone in the community who's looking to have those leaves collected, they can contact City Hall or Public Works. We will provide them those leaf bags and pick them up on that same schedule as we do the leaf service. All the information's on the city's website under Public Works. We'll make all that available to them. We look forward to getting those used as much as we can. And then, lastly, under the city manager report, just two things to report to you tonight. The playground equipment has been ordered. You may recall that at our last meeting, we made some approvals for that purchase. We have completed that purchase. I've sent the letter and purchase agreement to Great Southern Recreation. So, that item has been purchased. We're waiting on the delivery for that. Again, he mentioned about 120 days at our last meeting, which puts us well within our time frame for the installation. We look forward to that. And lastly, as a safeguard, I did reach out to the land trust. There had been some question about the footprint of the playground itself. Did reach out to the land trust to ensure that there would be no communication or other issues regarding the installation of the new playground and relayed to them that the footprint for the new playground is slightly larger than the old playground because we included the zip line in that section. So, I forwarded that letter to you, let you know that the land trust agreed with that. So, no issues with land trust as it relates to playground. The playground equipment has been ordered. So, the next thing we'll do is schedule that installation and work on the fencing for the playground itself. So, that's my report for you tonight.
Thank you, sir. Any questions?
Mayor, just a quick question. Did the bond rating ever get reviewed or adjusted during the bond process? Just kind of excited to hear if it moved.
No, sir. We haven't had that rating yet. We have contractual standard boards for that work. That work is scheduled for two weeks out.
And we anticipate probably an increase in bond rating.
Yes, sir. I think we're at a double A minus right now. My suspicion is we'll go to an A plus or a double A, which for us is kind of exceptional. Anything can happen. But to look at where we were five years ago, they upgraded us, which is in our favor as we go through this process. They upgraded us to a double A minus at no request of the city, just based on our financials that we had two years ago. Some of you were here and some of you weren't, but they rated us without our request for a rating, and we got a two-step rating increase in the summer of 2019. So, given the fact that we didn't apply for that, we got the two-step rating, we expect that the same two-step rating, if not more, would apply given our financials today. So, we look forward to that.
I have a question, if that's okay?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. As in regards to the stop signs, just because of some calls I've gotten, some of them seem really tall. Are they a little temporary still? Or are they going to be... Some, there's a few that are near, like White Oak in that area. One is so tall, it's like up in a tree. It's hard to see. And it seems like the other stop signs throughout the community are, you know, a little bit shorter. Is there a certain height requirement?
Yes. So, as it relates to that, the DOT rules to change regarding the height of the stop signs. So, we've had to fall within the height of those stop signs and the sizing of the sign. The sizing is a little bit different than what was previously installed and the height of that. We do recognize there are some site distance issues once we got those installed. So, is, in fact, today, we had a tree service contractor out working on some of those site distance issues with those trees to make sure those are there. So, we'll be in compliance with the requirements for the signage once that trimming takes place.
In reference to Kyle's Creek, that was mentioned back when, of course, the BOC didn't make the placement of the signs. That had nothing to do with us. So, but it was mentioned that Kyle's Creek has the more decorative signs throughout, and they were on order. So, how's that working?
So, with the signposts that are in Kyle's Creek, those are not the standard regular metal stick with a sign on. There's a decorative post that has to be ordered. We had to track down the builder of those when that subdivision was originally done. They didn't purchase those signposts off of a standard purchasing site. Most of your decorative signposts are going to be, oddly enough, an authorized signpost or decoration type through Middle Tennessee Electric. The reason that they do that is you have decorative lighting posts, and you want to have the decorative lighting posts that match the decorative signpost. So, there's a series of decorative light posts approved by Middle Tennessee Electric, and it has the associated post with that. In Kyle's Creek, they, the developer at the time, chose to use a separate or different signpost manufacturer, and those are one-off, hand-built, one-at-a-time signposts. That's not something we can just call and order six or eight or 10 of. That person literally builds one at a time. He lives in Williamson County. We have ordered those. We got with Kelly Schaber, who was the developer of that subdivision originally. He put us in contact with the manufacturer of those. We have ordered those signposts. They're being manufactured right now. We've since gone back and ordered the concrete settings for those posts. We'll install those concrete settings. So, once the signs get here, we literally will just have to take the sign out, install the post on the setting, bolt it down, remove the existing temporary signpost, and everything else will match.
So, the ones there right now are temporary?
That's correct. The only thing that won't match is the size of the sign. The size of the sign that we're installing is a DOT-required signing for the appropriate signing that's approved today. So, there may be some difference in the size of the sign, but the post and what it's installed on will match what's in the subdivision. The best way I can describe the signs are, the best example I can give you is if you drive through Castleberry subdivision, you'll see some of the decorative signposts. Those were Middle Tennessee Electric-approved vendor. Middle Tennessee Electric didn't do them, but build them, but they are approved from that lot of those items. But they did the same thing. They put the smaller signs on at the time. We don't have the ability to install the smaller sign and stay with DOT guidelines. So, if you go through Castleberry, you'll see some signposts that have the smaller frame for the smaller stop sign with the larger stop sign attached to it that covers that up. That's the reason for that, is because that's a DOT sign. And that's how we routed that purchase.
Thank you. Item nine, consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. On the floors, any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Johnson? Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 10, old business, there is none. 11, new business. Item A, ordinance 21-18, Vice Mayor.
Ordinance 21, 2021-18, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Fairview by rezoning 1.67 acres of property located on Fairview Boulevard, Williamson County Tax Map 042HC, parcel 11.00, from RS40, single-family residential, to C3 commercial. Property owner, Donald Hughes. Applicant, Bill Codis, Wash Associates.
We have heard the ordinance. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Are there any questions? Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor. So, this was, first, talked about being placed near Hardee's, which there was a couple of points of contention, just access getting in and out. You know, I think this is a great opportunity for Fairview to have a really nice car wash. They have this in Dixon. And for those of you that weren't at the planning commission, they had a really nice presentation about this washing site. And access in and out of this area is going to be much better in this location here. And they have a really good quality product as well, I think. So, that's all I have, Mayor.
This is not the same developer as the Hardee's Car Wash, is it?
That's correct. This is a different developer than the...
Okay.
It is. Okay.
Any other discussion?
Just a quick note. A lot of great discussions in the planning commission meeting. I was not present, but I got to watch it. But it does fall in line with the future land use map or kind of future vision there of that area and that use proposed.
Mayor, one last thing. I'll not relay that, but this is the first application for a revised zoning. You may recall that previously, we had Commercial General, which has presented problems across the city for years. So, with this, you have a C3 requested zoning. So, it does restrict what could go there. So, this is, you should be kind of congratulated for that work because this does protect that parcel from other unintended uses or other unstated uses. So, we think this is a pretty significant step forward just as it relates to our zoning and how you apply that ordinance.
I appreciate you pointing that out because that is huge. It just shows all the work going into it and the adjustments being made where in the past, zoning something to commercial, we were timid. We were worried. We overthought everything because it was such an open and broad spectrum. Well, now, our commercial's completely changed and has different layers of what uses could be. And so, now we can really focus in and implement our future vision.
Anything else? Hearing no other discussion. Ms. Johnson? Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. New business, item B, collection agreement for treehouse playground fence. Mr. Collins, I'll let you kind of wrap everything up there.
Yes, Mayor. This was discussed at the work session. And effectively, what we'll do is, based on that discussion, is go back. You may recall that there was talk of how would we generate revenue and collect funds for the fencing that would go around the new playground. Obviously, there are going to be some sponsorship of some pickets on that fence, how we collect those dollars. There was some discussion about using a third-party nonprofit to manage that collection and program. But after discussions that we had earlier tonight, the staff and I will reach out to the manufacturer of these. It's my understanding, or it's been expressed, that the manufacturer may have some website, so you can go and purchase there and share those dollars. So, they get their money. We get our money as a part of that fundraising effort. But we will work to get that done and then get that advertised as quickly as we can. If there's a separate agreement required for, just a contract for those services, then we would obviously present that to the BOC. But with that, this eliminates the ability or the need to have another local group do that work for us, so we can simply partner with the vendor directly and make sure that those dollars are remitted to us directly and in a timely manner for the construction of the fence.
Thank you, sir. Are there any questions? Or, Mr. Collins? Item C, Fairview Christmas Parade discussion.
Mayor, if you could just open discussion. Ms. Grayson just had a question if that's possible.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
So, the people at home can hear you.
I contacted the company yesterday and talked with Mark. He said he would only be responsible for producing the product, doing the engraving, and shipping it, complete package. He said all he wants is an Excel spreadsheet with the names, and that's all he needs. He doesn't want to, he doesn't have a program where he will accept the money and, you know, divide it and that. So, from there, I asked him about Leathers, our first playground, if they have installers that could come and install the fence. And he, I talked to Mark today, and he said typically, if it was a community-sponsored playground, we would be staying in their homes. We would be using your tools, and everything would be provided. And we would just be paid for their time. He said in this case, he would have to ship, they would have to drive from New York with their team, stay in hotels, be fed. He said it doubles probably, he said it would be $70,000 to install. That does not include the price of materials. So, I contacted just one person, Sam Burgess, who is... So I contacted just one person, Sam Burgess, who is a builder. And he said because it is a plastic product, he would need, he would help us try to find someone. He said the company that he uses, they're just straight wood, you know, miles of fence in front. They do it one way, no pickles on the burger, no sauce, just straight fence, wood fence. So I called Mark Leathers back again and I said, so I'm worried because it's a, you know, I don't want any Boeing, heat, cold. He told me that he would send me instructions without, and then release, release that so that he is not liable for somebody else's work under his name. He said it's nothing major. It's just a little, you know, little spacing, you know, that kind of thing. So that's kind of where we're at on the fence. And, and I don't know if the city has fence people that they know or if you want me to pursue that, I can keep working on that. But I really think that we still should go forward with the product because it's fantastic. It is life, uh, life, what's the word?
Time guaranteed?
There you go. Lifetime guarantee. Yeah. It's a great product.
Mayor, it's relatively easy on our side.
Okay.
Not, not much changes. All we would do in that instance is if the manufacturer of these pickets in there, they've stated that what they do is just simply manufacture those and no other thing, then we would simply go on the city's website. We would have purchased this, advertise, advertise that thing that could go in and customize it however it would be. We would need to figure out from the manufacturer, what's the latest that they could manufacture those things and get them to us in a timely manner. That will be our cutoff date. So we'd simply just advertise, if you want to purchase one of these pickets, go on the city's website. You can pay on the city's website. We would collect 100% of the dollars. When it came time to place the order, we would submit the Excel spreadsheet with the order. We would then take the, the installation specifications, provide to us, put that out for bid, bid that work out as we would normally do and then, and then professionally contract the installation of the fence specific to the manufacturer's guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're back to 11C, Fairview Christmas Parade Discussion. We met the city staff, the chamber, and I met Monday and discussed the Christmas parade. We do have a definite location, I believe, which is Westwood for a reverse parade. It will be the night of December the 18th. Mr. Collins, I'll let you finish about the other logistics of planning for next year and what else has been decided for this year.
Yeah, Mayor. Members of the commission, just kind of clear up some matters. So it is all of you know, I don't do Facebook at all, so I'll kind of give you information based on what I know and how we arrived where we are. But there's significant misinformation about this year's event and future events. Let me start by saying the Chamber of Commerce has been an exceptional partner to work with regarding this, this entire process. The Christmas parade, as has been done in years past, which is a standard moving parade that has historically taken place along Highway 100 between effectively Westwood Elementary School and Bowie Lake Road, is a pretty large event. It's not a simple have a parade, have a few police officers come out there and work it and then all of a sudden the parade's over. We've had instances in 2017, 2018, 2019 where vehicles breached the parade route. We've had to police the safety of those things. As, as a practical matter, between Bowie Lake Road and the baseball park, there are 31 access points that have to be managed from a public safety standpoint. Our best effort that we can have, if we have every police officer we have available to work that parade, the biggest number that we could have at any one time would be 15. At this point, we're managing 31 access points spread over three and a half miles with 15 people. It's incredibly difficult to do. That's hazard issue number one. Secondly, we prefer, everyone prefers that we have a nighttime parade. However, on the east side of Highway 100 or the south side of Highway 100, as I'm reminded that it is, we don't have a, the same amount of street lighting as we do on the north side or the west side of Highway 100. So with that, we have not only the issue of securing intersections and access points, but we also have the issue of securing the crowd during the advancement of the parade. As you do these, as you have a moving parade and you have activity that takes place, not only should you, should you secure access points, but you should also secure the route so that you can make sure that, that kids aren't getting into the parade route, that things being thrown from the parade are done in a safe manner. You prevent, prevent any access within that route. So it's not just a breaching of vehicles at those routes. It's the management of the crowd for those routes as well. So that, that's a bit of work. That's issue number one and two, or one and one B. The second issue we have related to that is the public safety concern that we have for the closure of the route. We're not only closing Highway 100 as a part of this route, we're also closing Highway 96, both of which are choke points for everything west of us, Dixon County, Hickman County, south of us. In the 2019 parade, Metro reported to us that traffic was backed up to 100, Highway 100 and Highway 70 in Belmeade. So they experienced through that distance, the inability to adequately provide public safety that far away in another county. So as a part, as a concern for that, we know that we will need to go out and ensure, based on what we've learned, we will need to partner with Metro for some police service or traffic control, preferably at 96 and 100 at the bottom of the hill. We will need to contract Williamson County EMS to stage an ambulance at the fire station where they're typically staged now and on the other end of the parade, preferably, preferably around the Sonic so that we could have EMS services on that side of town. We would also have to make sure that we have police patrol on duty on both of those routes so we can at least have one person to service those ends of town for a period of three hours, three and a half hours for the duration of the parade and partner with the state to make sure we could adequately advertise 96 and 100 closing for three hours at I-40 and Interstate 840. That's a big event. There's a lot of moving parts that take place there. So the effort was not to not have a moving parade for this year. The effort was how do we do this in a safe manage, a safe manner, knowing what we've learned and to make the event successful. So with that, we met with the chamber afterwards, sat down this week at City Hall and we all agreed that a moving nighttime parade is preferred for the community. There's no question about that. How we put all of the pieces in place that I just described to you is where the planning comes in. So you may recall that I've sent an email to you. We scheduled a meeting with you, staff and the chamber for, I believe, 10:30 AM on February 15, which is a Tuesday, to sit down, figure out how this event works, what are our needs, who do we partner with to go forward and secure those partnerships in advance. That will be Williamson County Sheriff, Williamson County EMS, Metro Police and the state. Those will be our partners that we need to consider as we go forward that. The other component that we had for that was to contract with an event management company. We've reached out to two who manage traffic events in Nashville, particularly one of the ones was the private traffic company that manages the Tennessee Titans events downtown. We have to make sure that we can provide sure security at those access points and be able to patrol the, the parade route as well. So that's where we are in the planning stage. There's no effort on anyone's part not to have a parade. There is an effort on everyone's part to make sure it's first, safe and second, successful. And that's where we are. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts of how we arrived at where we are. There has not been at any discussion at any time from any person, the discussion or concept that the Christmas Light Show in Bowie Park was taking away too many personnel to have a rolling Christmas parade, simply false. It's not true. That's a separate event that was, that was underway about 90 days before we got the Christmas parade permit. We've worked that out. We're handling that with staff. That would affect a, that would affect a static parade or a reverse parade in the park. It has nothing to do with a rolling parade itself. So we're doing the most we can to make sure we have an event that is certainly well-received by the community, but also safe for the community and not an unsafe event for our partners and other local government agencies. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that there are, but that's full report for where we are as it relates to Christmas parade.
Did we get a cost estimate for the security? Have we heard back from?
I have not gotten that number back yet. Our, our general estimate, you may recall from the meeting that we had, our, our estimate, and this is purely an internal estimate, was $7,000. So we understand that cost now. Obviously we absorbed some of that cost anyway because we had to pay overtime for police, fire, everyone who works it now. So that's not, that's not something that's been new to us. We've had overtime costs for events in the past, so we've had to pay those. But as this event's grown and as we work for the safety component of that, there's going to have to be some help to get that work done and that's, that's our effort.
Any other questions?
I have several. Okay. So just because I'm, I'm going to go in reverse because I'm just thinking about what, a couple of things that were said. I've been taking pictures at the Christmas parade out here that we've had, you know, before, pre-COVID for 15 years. It, do you feel like, and I know that they've had a rolling parade pretty much every year. Do you feel like it's that much different now than it has been for the past 25 years where we've had auxiliary officers come from county and help us out? And do you really feel like it's, I mean, I didn't realize, obviously it was that big of a deal with, you know, the emergency services and blocking all the way down to Belmeade. And I had no idea that until you just said that, that that was even a thing.
Right.
So county, I know that they've helped us in the past with auxiliary and I thought that was like maybe on a volunteer thing. I didn't know we had to pay them.
So, so in my experience, I'm, I'm not recall a time where we've had county volunteers or auxiliary for service. So I'm not saying, yeah, I'm not saying it hasn't happened. I'm just saying it's not there or we haven't had that. So, so I couldn't speak to that. But in, in managing this event, I know what our staffing is and it's just an impossibility to manage it safely. So, and, and they're not going to volunteer that for us. I'm sure there will be some cost, obviously. If they have a deputy out here who's working that thing, that's even going to be an on-duty deputy that they can, they can not necessarily have in service for three hours or that's going to be an overtime event and I'm sure the county would bill us for that.
Yeah, I think these were, they call them auxiliary. I don't know if they're, I don't know the whole.
Now, in years past, we've had auxiliary police officers at the city of Fairview, but the most I've ever known we've had is four. We have none today.
It's just that the whole, you know, I've, I've lived here over 25 years and I, I'm not in favor of the nighttime parade just because I'm out there taking pictures and I, I, I'm just on the forefront and I can see, you know, kids get out into the, you can't see them. And it, it just, it startled me, you know, the, you know, when it's dark and the kids would, you know, typically want, you know, at one point they were throwing candy out. So the kids would want to run into the street and get the candy. So the nighttime parade just scares me to death. But the daytime parade that we always had, the whole time I've lived here, 10 AM in the morning, it would go from ballpark to France, France, ballpark, whatever. It just didn't really seem like it was this big of an issue to me, but maybe it was much smaller than we anticipate for the future or something.
Yeah, so I don't know. I mean, keep in mind as, as we're doing this, the, the traffic on Highway 100 and 96, because we're closing two state routes, we're not closing just one. So that's a big ask. There, there's a lot that goes on there. The discussion, from a safety standpoint, all things being equal, I would prefer a daytime parade. But from the, from hearing from the chamber and from some of the other quests, the nighttime parade, the, the discussion for there was that the lights, activities and everything that are included on the floats, the vents, the parades and the participants aren't as visible or welcoming during the daytime as they are at night. They're, they're just, the lighting of those is more enjoyable at night during the day. So I think that's how they arrived there. As it relates to the safety of it, part of what, what we would do to make sure as best we can to ensure that is to do these appropriately. If you're going to have a nighttime event or even a daytime event, if you look at some of the other parades that you see in areas where you have traffic that's backed up or congestion like that, you'll have security, you'll have security pace that parade. So in reality, if we have security or an agency that's helping us secure the access points, which is crucial for us, I've witnessed in each of the last three years, the vehicle approach the oncoming parade. In 2017, it was, they had a vehicle breach 100 and they came head-on to the fire truck at the top of the hill at the, at the dentist office. So we know those things happen. We've seen that. So what we would like to do is when we contract out to get those services for those intersections, that we can have our uniformed personnel pace the parade, walk with the parade so we can do crowd control as the parade moves, right? If you have a police officer stationed every 50, 25, 75 yards and they're on each side of the road, then they can police that crowd and make sure that crowd stays there. So if you do have that event or if someone's throwing, throwing candy or some other things, it's not so unsafe if you have someone to police the crowd. It is incredibly unsafe if you have no one there to police that crowd. So we're trying to hit every mark that we can to make sure we, we police that thing, not only at the access points, that we can provide public safety at both ends of that, but also keep the participants safe as it relates to the moving parade itself.
So like for the parades that we've had for the past 20 something years, we just got lucky that there wasn't like a major incident.
You know, I don't.
I'm ju, I'm just trying to, you know, feel, I'm like, this is a big deal and it just seems like in the past, we just had a parade and it didn't seem like it was, you know, so impactful as, you know, it seems. And maybe it's because our community's grown or, you know, I just, I love seeing all the churches and the businesses and the high school and the football, you know, I mean, all the, you know, all the, you know, sports and, you know, just everybody being able to do their own float and, you know, and, you know, enjoy that, but.
But, but there are other, and I wasn't here 10 years ago, excuse me, so I can't speak to all of those things, but just in the last years, if you had sidewalks installed on both sides of 100, right? So my suspicion is that 10 years ago, you probably, and, and you didn't have certain things, Publix, Walmart, all those, all those areas. So as you grow and you do those things, my suspicion is that you had far fewer people in the grassy areas up and down 100 and you had them more in the central locations where they could park. The Food Saver parking lot, maybe where the MapCo is, maybe the shopping center across the street. I believe that was a grocery store at one time behind McDonald's for all those. So my guess is you had more condensed crowds at certain areas, but you didn't have a spread out crowd that can now be mobile as they are for basically the entire footprint from Bowie Lake Road all the way to Cops Pike and to some extent above, beyond that. So with that, just the mobility of a crowd and the people to move along presents its own issues if the numbers didn't change any at all. So if you were to go back and take the population that, that you have, that you see for the traffic and everything else that comes through, then those people are going to be participants in the parade as well. Now parade's not a regional event. I've been here five years. The July 3rd event that we had last year was twice the size of the July 3rd event that we had in 2015 or 16, but Fairview's only your own 10%. So if you take that same measure and apply that to the participants and then make them mobile across a two miles, a two mile route, all of a sudden you have a problem. So we're, we're trying to make sure that when we're, when we're protecting those events, that we do it in such a way that meets the needs for the event we have today. I couldn't speak obviously to that, but just looking at what I've seen from the overheads, from the infrastructure that was in place 10 years ago to today, you would have not had a third of the people standing in the grass as you would on the sidewalks who are now can make their way, they can walk the, the length of the parade as well. So where you had pockets of traffic, you didn't have mobile traffic that gets there. And within that, the areas that you have to block off Highway 100 become a little different. So that's how we arrived at that, at that thing.
And do you feel that like the different communities that have their own Christmas parade, we're in a different situation than them just because we tie up 196 or?
I think there are two issues. The first is obviously the amount of traffic that you have on 196 because you're going to block in two state routes. The other component that we have that very few communities have is that is our choke point. There is no alternate route. There's nowhere I can send anyone north, south, east, west, whichever way we call 100. So if we're backing up 100 and we're blocking it at Bowie, Bowie Lake Road, there's nowhere for them to go and there's no alternate route. So in that case, if we have it blocked at Bowie Lake Road and our fire truck is at Bowie Lake Road and I have 5,000 people at a parade and a parade coming down the street and an ambulance call goes out at the, at the nursing home behind the Sonic, then I'm either going to have to interrupt that parade, clear the street. that parade, clear the street, get that fire, to get that ambulance through there, or they're going to have to go the other way, take Crow Cut Road back around to Highway 96 to Horn Tavern to get to where they're going, or go to Cumberland Drive, take that route and go through Fernvale. Very few places have an absolute choke point on a state route where there is no alternate route that they can take. There's nowhere you can go. So for us, it's very difficult. The same if they're coming from the other direction. If they're coming from Highway 100 from the other direction, they can't navigate Highway 96 or Highway 100. So the nearest traffic that we would have to do for an emergency vehicle in that standpoint would have them take Horn Tavern to Cleveland Drive and then back to 96. So while, while I haven't been to every area and seen that thing, every parade that I have ever seen takes into fact the contingent request or the contingent requirement that you have the ability to reroute traffic, emergency traffic, particularly during the event. We simply don't have it. We, we, we don't have another route. So that's another factor that you get into, is how do you move these, these things? Because it's closed down for three hours. That, that's, that's a big event. So how do we move these people? It's just difficult to do. So with that, we need to go back and figure out, how do we stage those people? Again, if I only have two police officers on duty, and, and we could survive that for two hours, but you need to have an ambulance at Bowie Lake able to respond to that area, a fire truck at Bowie Lake able to respond to that area, a police officer able to respond to that area, and the same three on the 96, on the 100 corridor at 96, to, to handle that side of, of town as well. If not, then you've totally choked off every access point for public safety. So it, it's a, it's just a little more cumbersome. We just have a route that, if planned well, can be a successful route, but it can also be a huge liability for us if we don't take the time to plan that, plan that route.
Thank you. And so this has nothing to do with Mr. David Dodaro's post at all. This is just a comment for me. I refuse to debate on Facebook. I won't do it. Nobody's a winner, and people are in favor or not. There's no reason for me to ever debate on Facebook. The board here had nothing to do with the discussion of the parade. So we didn't make the decisions on that. But when information gets put out there, because I've gotten hundreds of phone calls, that there is a parade, it's going to be a rolling parade, the time and date, schools were told, the kids were excited, they went home and told their parents before anything was ever decided, and then found out that that wasn't the case, and then we're getting attacked because, oh, the city doesn't want a Christmas parade. And that has nothing to do with that post. It's, I mean, I saw it. I, I don't respond, and I won't debate, because I think this public forum is what that's for, to get the truth out. And I think our communication has been great. We've got so many wonderful things going on in our community. I don't want this to be a negative. I want the chamber to do great and everything, but the information has to be accurate, because we tend to get attacked, because we're the city in people's minds. And, you know, I love, I've lived here over 25 years. I love a rolling Christmas parade, but as, as Mr. Collins said, we've got to take into consideration a lot of things. So I'm excited that we're going to get together in February and plan it for moving forward, so that we have, you know, a good definite plan of the way it's going to go from here on out. But for all the people who heard one thing and thought we wanted something different, I'm not speaking for everybody. I'm speaking for myself. I love a rolling Christmas parade. But it's like, that information went out and got a lot of people upset because it, it was not accurate. So I just don't, I really encourage people to not do that until they get the accurate information, because I think it just, you know, with every great thing we've got going on in this community, you know, we just really don't need that. So I'll end with that. And thank you for putting that meeting together so that we can move forward and let the community know how we're going to do it. I think everybody loves, you know, Christmas time and doing a parade. So if we can, you know, organize it properly for the future, that's going to be the best way.
Mayor, I, I do have one more, too.
Okay.
So absolutely. I, I feel, and I know many people in Fairview feel the same way. Fairview is a city of parades and mass gatherings, of a playground, and it's not only something that expected, but it's tradition in the city of Fairview. And I, I think with our growth, we, we kind of start identifying some major gaps, some major holes. And, and we hear on a consistent basis every year of children getting injured, and I think locally that even happened here not too long ago, where a child was injured during a parade. There is a safe way to do this. There is a, a, a way to plan for this. An incident action plan should be developed with the Fire Department and Police Department. That should be reviewed every year to make sure that if something else is coming up, we go back to that incident action plan, and we tweak it, we make it right. And what we need to do is, we need to make sure the city is always working with that group that is putting this on, and we have complete buy-in with the group, we have complete understanding, and I think that's something that we, we can do a little bit better. If a group is wanting to sponsor this, we should be the subject matter expert to show them, we can do it, but this is how it needs to be done, this is how it needs to be done safely. And it should be on us to make sure we have all of the partners at the table to make sure that it's done and done correctly. So that's on the city. That's on the city to make sure that we are here keeping the public safe, and we're managing the infrastructure, we're managing the streets, and that incident action plan should be on the shelf for us to be, to pull out if we want a parade, if we want whatever. So, so that's something that, you know, we're going to make sure that we have. And like Mr. Collins was talking about specifically, he, we know exactly what needs to be done. Unfortunately, right now, in our current state, it sounds like we have to bring a bunch of people together, but the city is committed to do that. I, I say that, I, I know my feeling, I, I am personally committed to make sure that we're bringing everybody together. We're getting these plans together in place so that we can do this and do it effectively and do it safely. Because everybody that I have talked to loves the parades. It's expected here in the city of Fairview. Thank you.
And speaking of someone who actually was in charge of organizing the parade probably 20 years ago for a couple of years, it never crossed our minds that we were not being safe, or that we had traffic backed up. We just, we just did the parade. So thank you. It is so much better to be safe and know what we're doing.
No, that, that's just part of growth. And like I said, the, the chamber's been an excellent partner in this. It's not a city event, it's a chamber event. As growth and other things change, those, those things change, we work through those. And this was kind of the, the pressure point, tipping point where, okay, how do we plan far in advance for these things and make those go? That's why we scheduled the February meeting, to put all those out. So all of you, all of you know, and have expressed, safety is our number one concern. We want to make sure that works, but also have a successful event, and I think that's the purpose of that. So while this year may be a little bit disappointing, I think the effort being put forward tonight and with the group, and as we get into the spring, is to make sure that from here going forward, everyone understands what that plan is, everyone knows what that schedule is, even if we just identify the date. If it's the first Saturday, second Saturday, third Saturday, some way to get a standardized process for where we are, put that in place and go. I, I think that's easy. And, and as frustrating as some of these things can be, it's an exceptional problem to have. If you look at where we are as a community and look at what we're getting done, this is something that a lot of communities would love to have the problem of. How do we manage our events and our growth and do it safely? There are communities that are going the other direction. So for us, I think this is an opportunity to engage and just further highlight the successes of the city of Fairview, that are, rather than focus on one event that we decided to defer, based on an, an actual plan that would be suitable for the event, so.
Thank you, sir. Item D, Resolution 40-21, Vice Mayor.
Resolution 40-21, a resolution of the city of Fairview accepting the lowest bid for a resurfacing project on a section of Dice Lampley Road and authorizing this work.
We've heard the resolution. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the floors and a rediscussion. Hearing none. Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner Lucas.
Aye.
Commissioner Dawson.
Aye.
Commissioner Butler.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
Mayor Rainey.
Aye. Item 12, communications and the mayor commissioners, Commissioner Butler.
Thank you, Mayor. Just continuing on the discussion we were having. Thank you, everyone, for working so hard to ensure we're safe, to ensure our liability. Tabitha for being an asset to Fairview to keep pushing to make sure that we have something, be it reverse or traditional, just like last year when we pivoted, made an adjustment, and, and made things happen. So thank you, everyone, for working so hard, from chamber to the staff, to finding resolution, and, and next year will be better than ever. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. This is a great time for Fairview. We've got so many exciting things going on, and I'm just excited to be a part of it. Let's just remember to help keep Fairview clean. That is really important to a lot of us. So we just want to pick up and, and not throw out. So have a good week.
Mr. Dawson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Man, we are in the holiday season. And if you ask some of the, the people, the places where you shop, it, it seemed like we were in the holiday season about three months ago. But just really excited for Fairview, once again, to be able to come together and enjoy the city, what we have to offer, the park. And so I, I'm just really excited about what's going to be happening here in the city of Fairview in the, in the past, the next couple of months. And then also to hear that everything has been ordered for the playground is just amazing. People are getting so excited. And when that first shovel of dirt gets moved and all of these things, man, it, it's, it's reality now. So just, really, there's a lot of anticipation specifically for that. You know, when, when it comes to the city of Fairview making some of these decisions, you know, the, the, the parade being one of them, we, we absolutely have to do it safely. And, man, growth is difficult, some difficult decisions. And I tell you, you know, talking about this board here, there have been some really difficult decisions, very unpopular decisions that had to be made, that were made in, in the thought of, of public safety. And once again, it, it's, it's on us to make sure that we do that timely, that we prepare for that, and we also pre-plan for that. So we're doing, so we can do that and, and have parades every year. So just am really excited, and thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Lucas.
Thank you, Mayor. I do want to mention one event that is upcoming with all the ones that we have upcoming. November the 13th is the Veterans Day celebration out at Bowie Nature Park. It's a great event. I believe, if my notes are correct, I believe the ceremony actually starts at, at 10 a.m., and the reverse parade at the park starts at 10:30. If I'm, am I right on that? Okay. This is a great event to honor all of our veterans. If you haven't been to one of these events, it really is moving. You know, these people, these, these men and women paid an, an ultimate price for all of our freedoms, and so to be able to come out and honor them in this way is a great event. So I encourage everyone, November 13th, 10 a.m., to be out there and be a part of that celebration.
Thank you, sir. I don't know how many people have seen the local paper today. First, I have to say, I, I think the View CRC very much for my plaque. I, I think, I thank them more for putting me in the same sentence as Lois Shelton, because if you know Lois, she's the closest thing to a saint that I know. Also, the View has given a check for $21,000 to the city for the playground. So I'm going to give this to you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.